That's it. I thought one and that was good.
You got the board.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend, do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
No, we don't. And we haven't had a roll call yet either.
Oh, thank you for that.
Okay. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of last week's last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Do we have our time here? Could we put the volume up a little? How's that? Can you hear me now, ma'am? All right. Final orders, resolutions, written communications, there's non-scheduled. Public hearings and deliberations. This is VAR 2016-01, a request for variance Lovelace, Robert and Joanne. The applicant requests to continue this hearing to Tuesday, August 16th, 2016. Can I hear a motion to approve the request to continue the hearing?
I so move.
Second.
I'll second.
That would be to change it to August 16th at 6:00 PM at this location.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call on that?
Griffiths?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Oh.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, it is now 6:03 PM. Public hearing for File ZOA 2016-05 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend vacation rental dwelling land use regulations. It amends several residential and commercial zones to specify whether VRDs are allowed as permitted. That is unlimited rental nights or accessory limited rental nights. It allows unlimited rental nights in the R1-5 zone and sets a cap on the number of VRDs with unlimited rental nights in that zone. The ordinance limits vacation rental to 30 nights per year in other residential zones. It recognizes existing licensed VRDs in residential zones and allows those VRDs to continue to operate without accessory use limitations. It modifies the notice procedure to allow submission of comments before a decision is issued. It states that no additional properties will be rezoned to the VR vacation rental zone. It modifies requirements for parking and landscaping. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or take other action. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare an ex parte contact or conflict of interest in this matter? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of the hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commission questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. The staff, please present its report.
It's a pleasure to be with you tonight, Commissioners. I'm Ron Chandler, the City Manager. I think I know everybody, but for those who I don't. Mr. Townsend gets to do all the heavy lifting tonight. I get to just do the introduction of where we are and how we have come to this point. In February, the staff had submitted a memo to the City Council outlining the number of possible changes to the city's ordinances, policies, and practices as they pertain to vacation rental dwellings. At that time, the City Council authorized us to go forward with a couple of things. One of those was to hold a series of public meetings to discuss those with anyone who had interest. We did that. We also included as part of that the creation of a webpage, vrda@lincolncity.org, and asked anybody who had comments concerning the proposals that would be coming before you and before the City Council to submit their comments in writing. The ordinance preparation portion of this was divided into two groups. The first part dealt with licensing provisions. That was presented to the City Council in June, on June 27th, and they have been and are continuing to work on that portion. The other ordinance, which has been identified as Ordinance Number EE, is before you tonight inasmuch as it is dealing with land use. And Commissioner Robinson's already given a good summary of that, and Mr. Townsend will go into it in much more detail, so I won't cover any of that at this point. The emails that we have received, we separated those into two groups. Those that pertain to the licensing have gone to the City Council. Those that are pertaining to the land use are included in your packet and are on the webpage. Now, there were several emails that came that crossed over, and they dealt with both of the ordinances. When that was the case, we included them in both packets, and so you have received those. As I mentioned, you have received a summary of those proposed changes, and I will turn the time now over to Mr. Townsend to take it from there and give it in more detail.
Thank you. At the outset, first thing I want to do is, I guess, there's your own apology and explanation, I guess. The staff report you have in the packet that you've got, the ordinance that was there is the wrong ordinance. Trying to read that was probably confusing. The staff report also was a little bit incomplete. The ordinance that we sent to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and also that has been on the city's website for some time, is the correct ordinance, but I've given you a copy of the correct ordinance at your seats tonight. Also at your seats tonight are some emails that were received after the packet was put together, and copies of a couple of reports that I wrote. One on the economic impact of VRDs in Lincoln City, and another on housing in Lincoln City, housing in general. There's a third one relating to different options for regulating occupancy of VRDs that the City Council has had for their hearings on the licensing part. All three of these have been on the city's website for some time, but I wanted to enter these two into the record of the hearing tonight. Okay. So, this map shows you, it's a map of Lincoln City with the zones in different colors. The black dots are lots where vacation rental dwellings are located. You notice the orange areas here, and we have the highway running down in the middle of this red area, Highway 101. This orange area is the R1-5 zone, single-family residential, 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. South of the river, you can see again, near the ocean, the orange there, orange here, here, down in Cutler City, and a little bit over on the east side of the highway near the lake. That is where, that's the area where the R1-5 zone is the area where most of the changes you're thinking about tonight or the deepest part of the substance is. And that gives you some indication of why the R1-5 zone is picked. It's almost exclusively west of the highway, and also that the market has sort of said that's where we want VRDs to be. Many of the other areas along the west side of the city are commercial, and they're basically unaffected by this. And you'll see a large area at the north here that's not colored, and that's Rhodes End. And Rhodes End is not included in this tonight. Rhodes End is still subject to the county zoning, not the city zoning. So what we're talking about tonight is not about Rhodes End. We will be talking about Rhodes End sometime in the near future, but not tonight. So I want to go through section by section on the ordinance that you've got. And again, if you want to follow along, follow along on the copy that was at your desk tonight. Section 1 is, it amends the R1 section of the zoning ordinance, reorganizes the list of uses, list of permitted uses in the R1 zone, and specifies that VRDs are a permitted use in the R1-5 zone. The R1 zone is divided into three different pieces. One is the R1-5, which is 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, R1-7.5, 75 square foot minimum lot size, and R1-10, which is 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. This is saying that in the R1-5 zone, VRDs would be a permitted use. And we organized it into residential, commercial, and other uses, just three classifications. It's just for clarity's sake rather than having them all mixed up among each other. Section 2 amends the R1 zone to allow VRDs as an accessory use. To some extent, you may think this is redundant and a little bit confusing because we've just said that they're a permitted use in the R1-5 zone, but we're also saying it's an accessory use in the R1-5, R1-7.5, and R1-10 zone. And allowing it both as a permitted use and an accessory use in the R1-5 zone is done so that the cap, which we'll get to later, if the cap is reached, people could still have a VRD as an accessory use, but not as a permitted use. Permitted use meaning that it's not subject to the accessory use limitations, and so it would be able to be rented 365 nights a year. There'll be no limitation. If it is limited to accessory use, in those cases where it is, the ordinance would say that it would be 30 nights per year total. Is that clear? I'm getting...
Wait. No, I kind of missed the point there.
Okay. As permitted use in the R1-5 zone, you could have a VRD and rent it for an unlimited number of nights per year.
I was confused about the cap part of the...
Again, I'll explain the cap later, but the cap, one of the proposals is that there'd be a numerical cap on the number of VRDs that would be allowed in the R1-5 zone. If that cap were to be reached, then there still is, you could still have the accessory use if you wanted.
Thank you.
Then, there's a whole bunch of sections in here, and this is the first one, where it specifies whether VRDs are an allowed use, a permitted use, I mean, or an accessory use in the individual zones. In the ordinance in most places, we left it sort of unsaid that VRDs were an accessory use. It was implied, and what I've tried to do in the amendments that are in this ordinance tonight is make it clear explicitly that in this zone it's accessory, in this zone it's permitted. So in the RM zone, the multiple family zone, the proposal is that they be an accessory use, that's again, the 30 nights per year. Sections 4 and 5 relate to the Nelscott zone. And what it does is it deletes something that is called out as primary use as a VRD from the table of allowed residential uses in Nelscott, and then adds it back in as an allowed commercial use in one of the three subsections, two of the three subsections of Nelscott's zone, the Nelscott Beachside Mixed Use and the Business District. And also in the third ones, where the one in the middle in Nelscott, the Nelscott Cottage Residential, makes it clear that it is allowed as accessory use in that zone.
Would it be possible to point out on the map the commercial part of Nelscott and the cottage residential area?
Yeah. Here's Nelscott down here, or over here. The blue is the beachside mixed use. The yellow crosshatched is the cottage, Nelscott Cottage Residential, and the sort of purply pink here is the Nelscott Business District.
Thank you.
Section 6 says that VRDs are allowed as an accessory use in the RR zone, or recreational recreation zone, Recreation Residential. And that is, just to be clear, there's two smaller areas. One here in the northern part of the city, around 29th Street, northeast 29th, and another larger area here just south of the river and the lake, below, I think, southeast 3rd down to about, down to close to 12th or east of Elsley Grove, but not quite all the way down to it. And it allows, it amends the Taff Village Core Zone to call out VRDs as a permitted use. The Taff Village Core Zone was created from two zones, which was partly general commercial and partly recreational commercials. It's always been a commercial zone, just to make it explicit that they are allowed as a permitted use. Section 8 calls them out, VRDs as a permitted commercial use in the Ocean Lake Plan District. That is largely from about south of 21st and north of, I think, about 12th, largely on the west side of the highway, except right along the highway, there's an area on the east side of the highway as well. And Section 9 specifies that VRDs are accessory uses in the R1-5, R1-7.5, R1-10, RM, and RR zones. And actually, there should also say, but it doesn't, would correct it when it goes up to the City Council, it should also be in the Nelscott Cottage Residential Zone as well as an accessory use. And then it says that there are permitted uses in the R1-5, Nelscott Business District, Nelscott Beachside Mixed Use, Taff Village Core, Ocean Lake Plan District, Vacation Rental, Recreation Commercial, and General Commercial Zones. And again, it specifies that accessory use means 30 nights per year. If it's not accessory use, it's a permitted use, and that's unlimited number of nights. So what the result of this is, if we're looking at the current crop of VRDs in the city, in each of these zones, that's how many VRDs there are currently in the zone. It shows that 267 of the existing VRDs would be allowed as permitted uses. Just an example of what the situation would be if this was enacted today. There's another 36 that would remain as accessory uses, and then there's about 165 in Rhodes End that aren't counted.
Could you repeat those three numbers, please?
Repeat what? Okay. 267 as outright permitted use, unlimited number of nights. I think 36 would be, stay as accessory uses, and that's in the R1-7.5, R1-10, Nelscott Cottage Residential, RR, the Recreation Residential, and multi-family residential zones. And then 165, I think, in Rhodes End.
In the R1-5 zone, what percentage of the homes in the R1-5 zone are VRDs? Do we have that data?
What I can tell you, I can't give you an exact answer to that, but I can tell you that of the lots, I can give you two answers, which we'll get into a little bit more later, but briefly, there's 1,940 lots in that zone, in the R1-5 zone. 1,549 of those are developed. We've got a building of some kind now. So there are 162 VRDs. So as a percentage of the number of lots, it's 8.35%. As a percentage of the number of improved lots, it's 10.45%. So this map shows the results of what would happen if this ordinance were enacted. The areas shown in blue would be areas where VRDs would be allowed without limitation on the number of nights. The areas shown in green are the areas where VRDs would be allowed only as an accessory use. So you can see the area right along the highway, obviously, is the commercial area. Most of that is general commercial, some of it is Nelscott Business Use, some of it is the Ocean Lake Highway, Main Street Highway, and some of it is Taff Village Core. But the most of the rest of the blue area is the R1-5 zone. There is also Recreation Commercial along the coast as well. So continuing with Section 9, again, it specifies that accessory use means no more than 30 nights per year, and then it caps the number of permitted VRDs, that's the unlimited number of nights. Would cap the number of permitted VRDs in the R1-5 zone, this is only the R1-5 zone, at 12% of the total number of lots. So, as I said, there are 1,940 lots in the R1-5 zone. 12% of that number is 232. There's 162 VRDs now in the R1-5 zone, so the proposed cap would allow another 70, which would be 43% more than what we have now. Just a little more background information on that. This shows the number of VRDs that we've had in the R1-5 zone since 2008. And so in 2008, it was 190, the next year was 190, then it started dropping. Got down in 2011, it was down to 173, started climbing back up again in 2013 and 14, there was 194. And currently, there's, I think, about 162. But it varies. The drop after 2014, we saw citywide, and that was primarily because a lot of places either couldn't meet the safety standards, the owners chose not to because of the cost of putting in egress windows and that kind of thing. Section 10 of the ordinance has a grandfather provision that allows lawful existing VRDs to continue to operate without the accessory use limitation. And this affects the, again, the R1-7.5, the R1-10, RM, RR, and NCR zones, and there's about 36 of them. And Section 11 changes the way we handle notice. Right now, when we get a VRD application in, we process it, and then, this is for the land use application, we process it and then inform the neighbors that it's been approved and that they have a right to appeal the approval. I say neighbors, it means within a radius of 250 feet of the property. What the proposed amendments would do would require the city to give notice in advance. When we get an application, we inform people within 250 feet that we've gotten the application. They can comment on it, and then the department will make a decision, and then we will notify people of the decision as we do now, that they can appeal that.
Before you move on, may I ask you a question about this one? Which is, you were just describing the process, but what goes into your thinking for decision-making?
There's a...
What's the kicker that would say, either too many complaints or...
There's a list of standards that you have to meet to get a VRD land use approval. And so people would be able to say, they don't have trash service, they don't have parking, whatever, you know? Or I would love to have them as an, you know, whatever. So they can comment on whether they believe the proposed VRD would meet the city's standards or not. Some of the big things, as we've handled these, have been parking and landscaping. And so those are the big things. And then licensing, there's all the safety things, but that doesn't affect the land use side, that's just... Section 12 says there will be no new properties zoned in VR, Vacation Residential Zone. That's done in recognition of the fact that basically everything that's proposed here, where there really is no need for it anymore, since we'd be allowing them without limitation in the R1-5 zone. And it also reflects the policy decision that we don't want them in the R1-7.5 zone, which is the residential areas largely on the east side of the highway, and also the villages at Cascadehead property in that area, those are also R1-7.5. Section 13 eliminates a provision in our parking standards that says you can't triple stack cars outside the garage or carport. That's where, if you're the closest, the furthest car area, if you have to move two cars to get the third car out, currently that's illegal. This would do away with that with the idea of, essentially, who cares if you have to move two cars, as long as they're parked on the property properly. You know, as long as they're parked on the property properly, triple stacking is probably better than having them parked on the street or whatever. Section 14 changes the landscaping standards. Right now, we have a separate landscaping standard for vacation rentals. What this would do would change the, change it to that VRDs are subject to the same landscaping standards as any residence is in the city. With one caveat, and that's that in the VRD landscaping requirements right now, 50% of the front yard has to be landscaped, 50% of the width, so that we don't get a front yard as a parking lot. And this would keep that in there. The existing landscaping standards, where other residences don't have that, they do have an overall percentage that has to be landscaped, it doesn't say that you can't do the, more than 50% of the front yard. And then in commercial zones, it says that, or it would say that the landscaping has to either be as it was approved in your site plan, if it went through site plan approval, or the same as existing for other residences, for single-family residences. And then Section 15 directs the city manager to remove limits on the number of nights in existing VRDs in the R-15 zone, except for those that are subject to conditional use permits, because that was done through a process where the planning commission made a decision, this is the number that meets the standards. So in order to lift that, this would require permission from the planning commission. And actually, the city attorney and I were discussing, and it might be better than just saying, to say that the city manager shall lift the limits, is actually, there should be a process for people to apply to do it, because again, it was a quasi judicial decision, it wasn't made by the planning commission, it was made by the planning director, but it's still a quasi judicial process that people got notice of, they either did or didn't appeal, and if they maybe were happy with the, you know, the limitation of a certain number of nights, so they didn't appeal, and then to have someone come in and say, oh, by the way, it doesn't count anymore, it could be considered sort of trampling on their rights of input on it. So we could have a, essentially, a process for, if someone's applied to have the number listed, lifted, have the accessory use limitation lifted, and then we'll send out notices if it were new applications that were gotten.
This is a proposal, or this is written in, this is a new proposal you're making, saying it probably should be, it was like you started the paragraph? How does, that's something we'll talk about.
You can talk about, yeah. Again, I think the city manager would, or the city manager, but the city attorney would recommend that you do that. Make, recommend to the council that they do that. And I think that's it for the staff report. So, I don't know if you have any questions, or Ron, if you-
Commission, have questions for staff? Please, Steve.
What's your rationale behind the 12%? And how did you arrive at that figure?
It was to give a pretty good scope to allow them, allow increase in numbers. I had first looked at about 10%, but it was a pretty low number. There wasn't that much scope, it looked like, it'd be likely we'd probably get to that number really quickly. And then it would be back to the city council, do we want to raise the cap or not? I should make that point, if at some point in future we get up to 232, or we get close to it, the city council can weigh in and say, well, you know, we're happy, we're happy to not lift it, and we think, you know, we like VRDs, and, you know, haven't been a problem over the last period of time, so let's go ahead and allow more. So that's, anyhow, that's a political decision. But it's, there's nothing magic about the 12%, but it just seemed to give a good, a good scope for increasing numbers.
Following, in that same thinking about the 12%, I had the same question when I was reading through all of this and trying to do all the math. And I guess the part that bothers me about this, quite frankly, is that we understand that Rhodes End doesn't have city zoning yet. We know that it's coming, and to not include the VRDs that are now in Rhodes End with that whole number, if you're talking about, this is almost like a, there's a couple of parts to this. This is almost like a citywide, well, you say R-15, but shouldn't, if, okay, R-15, if this is agreed to, approved, then it would lift the number of nights to then, to 365, which would be the same as what is now approved in the commercial. So I guess one part of my question is, then why, oh, why are we not including the entire citywide in that 12% or whatever the percent is that you're thinking of, rather than just pulling out one zone out of all of the zones? Because, and still, I want to talk about the Rhodes End piece of it, because that's a significant number. And so what happens then, when we get to the Rhodes End zoning, and when we get to the zoning that includes the VRD cap on Rhodes End? And we know that right now, there's about 20 to 22% VRDs in Rhodes End right now. It doesn't make sense to me to do these little bits and pieces, when we actually have, according to your map, a pretty good picture of where the VRDs are now, where the 365 days are going to be put into place, and then where the accessory use is, which we still need to talk about. So I'm still kind of stuck on 12% of this, and then what's the percent here, and what's the percent over here? It's not adding up to a whole to me.
The problem that we ran into originally, that our idea was that we would look at all zones where it would be permitted, and there would be a cap based upon all of the lots in those different zones. The reason why we were, why we had to break it out is because we are under an annexation agreement with Rhodes End. And so we have to deal with that separately. So what we will end up with is a cap for the R-15 area, and then there would be a cap for the Rhodes End area, and that is necessitated by the fact that we are under an annexation agreement.
Yeah, and I understand that part of it, fully aware, living in Rhodes End myself, going through the annexation, and knowing the conditions of the settlement agreement. But my question still is, we know exactly how many there are today there, just like we do in the rest of the R-15. Why aren't we, we know that there's going to be city zoning in Rhodes End, Richard already has the draft completed, as far as I know, has for quite a while, and we know we're getting to that place. So I have to say it again, and I'm going to, you know, stay on this soapbox, because a VRD is a VRD is a VRD. We're talking about the entire, the business of VRDs, and what people can do and can't do, and how many days and how many nights they can or cannot rent. And quite frankly, it's kind of the elephant in the room. And to me, it still does not make sense, if you say 12% now, which doesn't include the other VRDs that rent 365 days a year, the commercial zones, the other zones that are in there, and it doesn't include what we know about Rhodes End, even though you could put a placeholder for Rhodes End in here, because it's going to happen, it just doesn't add up to me. It doesn't look like a good comprehensive picture of what we're trying to do.
Can I ask a question? R-15 zone, is Rhodes End R-15, or would it be R-15?
I don't know if it will be, that's not the proposal.
Well, if it's not R-15, you're talking about R-15 zone, so it wouldn't be relevant to Rhodes End if it's not R-15. Am I correct?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. I think that Commissioner Hinton is looking at it as, it's, you know, basically residential zone, and we should treat both, treat them comprehensively together. What I expect, what I anticipate happening is, there will be a, Rhodes End will be in a slightly different zone than the R-15 zone. And given the number of VRDs, the proportion, they will, Rhodes End will get a different cap, get its own cap. Right now, there's 904 lots in that zone, in Rhodes End, of which, and there's 165 VRDs, that's 18.25% of the lots there are VRDs. I think one of the concerns that led to treating the R-15 separately, I guess there's two things there. One is, the intent is to keep our residential zones largely residential. If, and that's why there's a relatively low number, 12%. If we included Rhodes End, that percentage, if we follow the same philosophy that led us to the 12%, that percentage would have to be considerably higher. And there's no indication that necessarily would, they would stay in Rhodes End or anything, that it could end up, the R-15 could have a much higher proportion. The whole city as a whole would stay under the cap, but the R-15 zone would have a much higher proportion of VRDs than even the 12%. And that would might run contrary to the idea, let's keep it as residential as we can. And the reality is that Rhodes End is much more, has a much higher proportion of VRDs than the rest of the city does, and the thought is, it should be treated separately, in largely the same way, but separately.
You say that there was 165 vacation rentals in Rhodes End, and for the R-15, this also applies, I don't know the numbers. So you have, you're stating VRDs versus lots. And I believe that's different than homes. And what are the percentages versus VRD homes versus homes? Not homes versus lots.
In, in the R-15 zone, I can't tell you exactly how many lots have homes on them, I can tell how many have something on them, a substantial improvement, you know, there's not just a little shed, but there could be something. But the ones that aren't homes would be a relatively, quite a small number. So in the R-15 zone, there's 1,549 improved lots. And so the VRDs, as a percentage of improved lots in the R-15 zone, it's 10.45%. In Rhodes End, there's, of the 904 lots, there's 724 are approved, so that's 22.79% of VRDs amount to 22.79% of the improved lots. I did, we did it based on lots rather than improved lots, just-
Makes sense.
Because that's, you know, it's the vacant lots that are the ones that will be new VRDs largely in the future.
I also have a question on your housing summary, was based upon the 2010, 2014 American Community Survey five-year estimates from the United States Census Bureau. I was wondering why we didn't use our own information for that?
The census doesn't break it down that way. I was just trying to gather, in that report, I was just trying to gather information from the census site that could be informative in a whole bunch of different contexts relating to housing.
Instead of using our own numbers, we're using an estimate? I just, we're going to base the whole thing on an estimate from somebody else versus our own information, which we have? I don't see that-
I wouldn't say we have it. The census data are much more complete than-
Than our own.
Anything that we can do. Because, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, like the financial characteristics in there, based on the information they have about houses, and so I can't, based on our numbers, I have no idea of how much people pay for rent, or how much they pay for their mortgage or anything. The census has pulled that information together, and it's in the same context of the numbers that they have gathered. Again, it's as good a source of data as there is on housing-related statistics. We can, we have some information, like I can, I can tell you a pretty good idea of how many units there are in each zone. I mean, there's things in that, like, one thing that jumped out at me is, I think it says 255 units that are in duplexes. You can't have an odd number of dwelling units in duplexes. But it arises from the methodology that they use, and you have to recognize it, their information is estimates just as ours is.
Do you have, you have it for 36 to 98 is the proposal that the-
I couldn't hear that.
In this, you have the proposal as being 36 to 98. Has that been established, just 30?
38 is what's proposed here. 39.
All right. Steve?
I have a general question, and that is, how did the city's comprehensive plan guide your development of this amendment?
One of the policies in there is protect the residential characters of the residential area, so that, again, that's why we set the, a proposed setting, the cap relatively low, that's the principal thing, and also, we're supposed to preserve housing, have housing available for, I forget the exact words, but it's people basically of all income levels and all different kinds of housing types. So that's one of the reasons for having the east side of the highway being not open to unlimited nights, but to minor accessory use. Those are the principal things. Also, I mean, there's, we're supposed to support our tourist economy, and so recognizing VRDs is an important part of that also figured out.
Please.
I just, I have another question, too, about the mapping of all this, and the deciding of which zones to include and which to leave out. And it kind of goes back to my big picture look at things, and if you kept the cap at what you're suggesting, and included all of the zoning, all zones, would be, we'd be in legal trouble?
Actually, if you, like, we did like 12% citywide, I think there would end, that would open up a huge number of VRDs.
What you would hit-
Well, then you could make, well, you could adjust it down to the appropriate number, I guess, then. But my point, I guess, is, if it was a percentage that would reflect the same amount, and it was citywide versus just R-1-
Project that out a little bit. So let's say we lowered it, we based it on all lots, so all residential lots. But we still limit the number of nights to only the R-15 zone, and whatever the, and whatever Rhodes End becomes. And the city then develops the villages area with its master plan, that's currently master plan, would add an additional 1,800 lots. That means that you would have the percentage of those R-17.5 lots added into it, but the only location the VR, the vacation rental dwellings could be located, would be in the R-15 zone. The reason you limit it on the zone is that if you grow with a lot of R-17.5, then you're going to permit many, many more VRDs in only the one zone. So the density of the VRDs in that zone would increase- So the density of the VRDs in that zone would increase substantially because the number of lots that you are growing would affect that in, with the other, with the other zones.
But I mean, including all of the zoning with the 365 full-time VRDs, but then shrink that percentage to the appropriate number to, because to me, it's just looking like a bit of a segregation here, or, you know, I know zoning does that on purpose, I understand that. But it just, when you're talking about housing, if I could just take it this far, if I had a lot that was 1.1 point, if I was in the 1.75 area, that'd mean one thing. But if I could only afford or get a house on the 1.5, then I get different neighbors, I get different, you know, I get businesses as well as a neighbor. I mean, I'm just trying to think about this as fairly as possible for all residents and to also accommodate the VRD business that we rely on, so. It's just, it's just a bit of a stretch. In every way I look at it, it's just like, it doesn't quite, you know, feel right yet.
Also, we want to, we don't want to limit them in commercial zones. We want to encourage them to go into commercial zones. If we have a citywide cap, it could end up that at some point, they can't go anywhere. And commercial zones provide a great place for, for them to be.
Are there any more questions, or stuff?
Richard, I have a, kind of a theoretical question. So let's say I'm a VRD, or I own a house in the district and I want to rent it out. Could I not do a monthly rent to a third person? And that third person could then sublease my house and therefore avoid all sorts of scrutiny?
Not Airbnb?
No.
That's Airbnb.
It'd still have to have a license.
Well, how do you know? I mean, he's, he's already has, he has a renter that rents the house on a monthly basis. That renter turns around and sub-rens it to people that come in on the weekend.
We, we search for people doing things like that.
It's pretty easy to circumvent that because you're not going to know who, who's subleasing. You know, it could be in the paper or something like beach house, Lincoln City interested in renting. Contact somebody that, you know, at an email address that you know nothing about. Pretty easy.
If they're online, I mean, we, we search a lot of places for VRDs that are, don't have permits. Have we find them? We just got, there was one that we didn't find, we just got informed of today. And we're doing something about that. There are, I mean, people get around it. I know that there's, there is likely one that someone rents only to their friends, but they do rent them. We have no way of knowing about that. But, you know, the, the subletting thing, if they're, if they're going online, you know, with any of the online sites or just on their own, you know, we, we do, we search, we have various search strings we do.
It's so easy. So let's say, you know, I'm a parent, I have my son that rents the house from me on a monthly basis. I put an ad up on my workstation area to give me a call if you need to have, rent a house, and then it's a sub-rent. It's so easy to get around the rules. That's why I'm always troubled by putting in more rules because people will find more ways to get around them.
We can't plug every hole, but we plug a lot of them, and when we find violations, the, the penalty can be quite high.
Yeah, but we've been doing that for the last 20 years and we haven't got to the point where it's working. Just, just an opinion.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment and testimony. Please state your name only. I'm going to read from this list, call your name, come up and state your name, speak clearly into the microphone. David Knoll.
Yeah, my name is, my name is David Knoll. Because we're limited to three minutes, I thought we had five, but I'm going to carve this down. 30 days of operation in terms of this, this term that we've been using, accessory use, I think is a very arbitrary number. I'm not sure it has any significance. It could have been 31 days or 28 days, or 150 days, or my suggestion, 182 days per year. There is no significance in 30 days except that it doesn't allow certain people to rent their property. I think to run a successful business or a successful rental, you need to be able to amortize costs over a longer period of time. I think 182 days, which if we're talking about accessory use, makes far more logical sense to me. If you have a beach house and the majority of days per year, or 183, it is a second home, a vacation home, that makes it the primary use. If you rented out the minority of days, 182 or less, that makes it a subordinate or accessory use. All VRDs could live with that formula, and by the way, I think it was one of the options that was originally thrown out in the very beginning. I would like to know, and I know you're not going to answer the question tonight, but what is the one major reason that these changes are being proposed? When I tell my guests that are, that are renting from us about this process that we've been going through for the last five years, they all seem to ask that very same question. What is the major reason that these changes are taking place? It seems like we have something that is working well unless there's a major reason for a change. Sometimes I think it's better just to leave it alone.
Thank you. Thomas Eastman?
My name's Thomas Eastman, and I own a landscape firm here, I do a lot of vacation rental myself.
Mr. Chairman, speak into the microphone, please.
I own a landscape maintenance company here and I do a lot of vacation rental. And it creates jobs for a lot of people in Lincoln City. And I'd like to see them be able to rent their building whenever they couldn't rent their building, so they provide more, not just in my field, there's housekeeping, there's restaurants, there's all kinds of revenue that brings into the city. And so I just came on the behalf to let everybody know that I really feel it's important that we continue the vacation rental as long as we can. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Weaver?
My name is Kathleen Weaver, and I share some of Ms. Hinton's concerns about setting rules for one small group that don't apply to others. And this evening, we've heard about those that might apply, say, 12% in one zone, but maybe 22% in Rhodes End. We've heard that landscaping for VRDs has to be 50% of the front of the property, but if it isn't a VRD, 50% is not required. I'd like to see more consistent rules that apply to residents as well as to people who rent their properties either a lot or, or partially. And like our first speaker tonight, I feel that 30 days versus 360 is wildly out of proportion. The 182 makes more sense to me, even though that doesn't apply to me with my VRD because I happen to be in a certain zone. It applies to a whole lot of other people. And 30 days, if a person has a VRD or even has a property that they have inherited, 30 days does not give enough of a buffer for them to continue to, to pay for that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all the names I have on the sign-up list. Are there any others who would like to speak? Raise your hand, please. Please come up.
Hi, I'm Kathy Basset. I own a home in Rhodes End, and I just want to have clarification. If you pass this, only the R-1-5 zone can rent for unlimited days, does that immediately make it so I cannot rent my home for more than 30 days? No?
No, it doesn't. Rhodes End is still subject to the county's zoning.
Okay.
So, and that will continue until such time as, as we amend the zoning for Rhodes End. And I'm guessing that Rhodes End will get a treatment similar to what we're talking about for the R-1-5 zone. But for now, you're subject to the county's standard, whatever that is.
So I would just encourage you to not put limitations on any of the homeowners in town. For us, it would be devastating to be limited to 30 days. And you're talking about limiting some of the homes in the other districts. And I'm sure it's the same devastation for them too.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, I'm Martin Rowlands. I have a home in the Rhodes End area. And I have concerns about the ordinance here, not that it affects our own home, but I see that this is coming in the future. And I'm also not really aware, I agree with an earlier speaker, of, you know, what, what is the real need for taking away a property owner's use of his property that does tend to bring in revenue to the city? And it certainly adds to the vacation, vacationability of Lincoln City. It adds a lot to the, to the flavor of the city. I would hate to see more restrictions put on homeowners. I do have a concern when this eventually comes to Rhodes End. Thank you.
Are there any others wish to speak?
Hello, Debbie Williams. I would just like to talk a little bit about the statistics of what we're talking about here. Based upon last night's presentation by Richard, the limits of occupancy or limits, and I know that's not what you're talking about today, would limit or affect 377 homes, 348 of them negatively, isn't that correct? Of the VRDs, something to that effect. It's well over 300 homes would be negatively affected by the limits. And then if we say that we are also going to limit the number of nights of the homes that we've got, what is the economic impact to the city? Owning businesses here, even in the summer, it is difficult to run a business. And if we take out, and if we make the, the homes that are renting around 180 days and say, now you can only rent for 30 days, well, when are they going to rent? They're going to rent in the summer. What does that do to our shoulder? We have not had restrictions in the past, correct, for getting a VRD. Last year was the first time we've had restrictions and they restricted them to 90 days, which from a real estate perspective, we've all, already lost many sales based upon that. And if we had no restrictions in the past, and we only have, I think, 427 right now VRDs? Is that correct, total?
About 468.
468, I thought we lost 80 last year.
That was after the loss. That's after the loss.
Okay, so we had more than 500 to begin with. Okay, so 468. And I think that what we're looking at is a fear projection that, you know, everything's going to become a VRD. Everything has been able to become a VRD up until this point and has not. It is a very difficult job to run a VRD and to run it well. If we just looked at implementing an education and best practices platform for people getting a VRD, that they would actually have to read and take a test to be able, just like you'd take a test to get a driver's license, or take a test to fly a plane, you are providing a service to a clientele, and if you could provide a coursework or whatever, and it wouldn't have to be that hard, and I volunteered to help write it. If I have the largest VRD in town and I've had zero complaints and zero tickets, it's all about behavior and how you run your VRD. So if we just provided that, you could get rid of all of this controversy. That's all I have to say.
Sir? Oh, Richard. Anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you.
Please.
My name is Jennifer Kavanaugh. I have some vacation rentals on Rhodes End. And I would like to say ditto to what Debbie just said. I think that that would be incredible because I thoroughly, thoroughly agree with her. It is a very tough job to rent a vacation, rent a vacation rental well, to run one. And I think a lot of it is because people, maybe they don't put the energy or time into it. I do not rent one single night without talking to a person individually. It is that important to me. I care about Lincoln City, I care about the neighborhood, and I want our neighborhood to be as good as everybody else here does. I feel, I've often thought, what if you were to take each vacation rental and in a sense, monitor that, educate people like Debbie says, and then monitor it in some ways, if you can, on an individual basis. Three strikes, you're out, maybe. But give everybody the opportunity like myself, like Debbie, who have vacation rentals and have never had a complaint, never had anything in a negative, no negative reviews, nothing. But, so why penalize us? We love Lincoln City, we want to retire here, we want to have our kids come here and our families, and they love, they love the area as much, but we're being penalized. And I feel that we're trying our hardest to have a good vacation rental. And I would be happy to help educate people as well. Or do what I can to help newcomers or others learn to, you know, run a vacation rental. But I feel that we're being penalized on the whole when we don't necessarily need to be. So I totally ditto what Debbie just said.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Thank you. Are there any comments from representatives of public agencies? Well, if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the record?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that you not close the record. And you may also want to keep the hearing open. to keep the hearing open, not close the hearing, continue it till the next meeting. I'm suggesting this because of the problems that I mentioned at the outset where the packet had the wrong ordinance in it and so to make sure that people have an opportunity to review the right ordinance, which is on the city's website, not in the packet, but on the city's website, then you could take additional testimony if you want or you could just leave the record open so people could submit record, written testimony and then you can consider that at your next meeting. So deliberations would not be at tonight's meeting, would be in two weeks.
I just looked at the ordinance on the website compared to the paper. They look the same. Do I have suddenly some new ordinance?
The one that you had, the one that you had at the seat tonight is the same as the one that's on the city's website as the proposed ordinance is what's, the one that's different is the one that's in the packet that's on the, the city's meeting portal. So if someone wanted to see what's on the agenda and what are the materials that go with it, if they relied on what's in the packet, they got the wrong materials. So the idea is to give them, give everybody an opportunity to make sure that they're looking at the right thing. You need to, need to speak into the microphones, everybody.
I'm sorry. I don't know, I was just thinking we could close the hearing, leave the record open and tell our next meeting to deliberations.
I don't know how, if we close the hearing though, people that are looking at the agenda's data and have the wrong information won't have a chance to come in and say...
They will because I suggested that the record remain open until our next meeting.
Close the hearing. Close the hearing, they don't have the right to talk.
That's, I see. Okay.
Well, I would, I would like to do what Richard just suggested and extend this hearing and the record to our next meeting.
You would make a motion to continue...
I make a motion to extend the hearing and the record to the next meeting.
Continue the hearing to...
Leave it open and the record open so that we can continue this...
You would continue this hearing to date certain.
Which, what?
August 2nd.
August 2nd at 6:00 PM at this location?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Robinson?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, the hearing and the motion, I mean, the, the hearing and the record is still open. I, refresh my, refresh me on the date.
August 2nd.
August 2nd? All right. In that case... Moving on. Old business, non-scheduled, new business, non-scheduled, reports and comments from the community development director, please. Reports and comments.
Yeah, actually, I'm just reading what, apparently a report and comment that I have. On the 27th, I said that the city council will accept public comment on proposed amendments to the licensing regulations and the commission will consider the land use amendments on the 19th, which is tonight, and these will be considered by the city council on the 22nd. Why is this here? Okay. Commissioner Cunningham asked if the planning commission will see the licensing amendments and I said these were not land use matters, so they only go to the city council. Then Deb Nicholson reported on the Spyglass Open Space Thinning Project and that project will begin again this month. And Timothy Novak resigned. I guess this seems to be...
That's last, last week.
That was last week, yeah, last week.
His reports and how, I just, I'm a little surprised to see this here, so is another, another, another thing I screwed up on this, on tonight, so. Yeah, but it's not. Oh, okay, I guess it is. Never mind.
That is very interesting.
It is interesting, isn't it? So where's that right piece? But I have nothing to go comments. Apparently I will not dig any deeper hole tonight and... We'll let you all out.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
I could add, I guess, that since, since we brought it up, that Spyglass Thinning Project has now commenced in the south part of Spyglass. They have completed their trail work in the north part of Spyglass and I walked those trails the other day and it's, it's pretty nice in there, so. Yes, but, but please do stay out of the south part of the, and perhaps maybe out of the whole area for the next two weeks. It should be done after two weeks.
Thank you.
Actually, there's, there's a couple of things I do want to mention that last week, Councilmember Noraeikis and Ward and Allison Robertson from the Urban Rental Agency and I and Councilmember Susan Wall, we all went down to a housing conference down in Newport, countywide housing conference that went very well and there was a lot of exchange of ideas of situations that people have in, in the different jurisdictions and, and some discussion of some possible ways to help to alleviate the affordable housing issues, the workforce housing issues that we have in the community. And related to that, Senator Arnie Roblin is, has a, his coastal conference is coming up early next month down in Coos Bay and I'm going to be on a panel about workforce housing and affordable housing at that conference as well. And that'll have people from county, city, state, federal government, developers and looking at, at what might be able to be done. And I know there's another related conference coming up that hopefully will also include lenders because that's one of the big issues, getting lenders to lend on affordable housing projects and that'll be coming up soon.
Could you share the information of that conference with us when it's compiled?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? I have nothing this evening. Planning Commissioners, reports and comments, sir?
I, at this point in time, I'd like to express my appreciation for the police officers of Lincoln City with what's going down in this country right now. I want them to know that there's people that really know that they're our first line of defense and they're the ones that are willing to stand up for us, no matter what color we are, and they stand up every time. And I really don't like groups that would diminish what they do. I, I want the Lincoln City Police Department to realize that we do count on them and we trust them and, and I'll do whatever I can to support them when the opportunity...
Good job. Thank you. Any other comments? One more.
I really like the model of the park bench for the Agnes Creek Open Space that's in the hallway there. I think that's very nicely done.
I was just going to echo what Gary just said at our last neighborhood meeting. We were talking about exactly this very same thing, thanking our police guys.
Public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. We went through that, but are there any, any, your chairman?
I'd like to know if we could set a time up in the future to have a conversation about kind of the, the aspect that different contractors have about doing business here in the city. I can think of at least five that will not do anything here in the city because of our rules and regulations and I'd just like to see us have an open discussion about that. Maybe invite some of these people in to hear what their concerns are. I don't know if we can set this up for a future meeting or how to go about it, but I think it's an important topic that we need to look into. I've just been hearing so many complaints.
Do you think that would be a good forum for a joint work session with the city council?
I, I was kind of going that way, but no, I want it to be more open and I want it to be more this type of format here because I'm just hearing a lot. It's not a week goes by where I don't hear something new. Something is not right and I'd like to get to the bottom of it. So if we can have a discussion on it, maybe there is a proper format for it.
What do you think, Richard?
I'll get back to you on that. We'll, we'll discuss it staff and figure out what might be appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments from the planning commissioners? Public comments on non-agenda items? All right, future agenda items, next meeting, we had miscellaneous 2016-02, the Crab Pot request to restore non-conforming structure.
That's down in the Cutler City area. Crab Pot burned two years ago and they want to be able to reestablish that building with non-conforming and be able to rebuild. And then, of course, also on the agenda will be...
Continuation of this hearing.
Continuation of the hearing from tonight. Thank you.
And also the VAR 2016-01, the request for a variance, isn't that on our next agenda too?
For the second meeting in August.
Oh, sorry. Should put my glasses back.
All right, we're adjourned.